I would like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for June 2, 2022, beginning at 7:10. The Board of Trustees on June 2, 2022, beginning at 7:10 p.m. It says we will convene in the closed. I still say it? Thank you. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for being here. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We'll start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Mays in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I wanted to read something before we get started, if you don't mind. As we open tonight, our hearts and minds are with the families of Uvalde, Texas, as they grieve the tragic loss of two educators and 19 children gone far too soon. We in Arlington ISD send our love and support. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And I thank Mrs. McMorrow for helping me with the statement. I appreciate that. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around The first item on our agenda is programs and presentations.
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we'd like to recognize our J. Woodrow Count Scholarship recipients that are able to attend with us tonight. So I invite Stephanie Arseneau from the Guidance and Counseling Department to come forward and help us with that recognition. Welcome, Ms. Arseneau.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight, President Fowler, Dr. Cavassos, and other members of the board. It is an honor for me to present the recipients of the 2022 J. Woodrow Count Scholarship. A committee at each high school selects the application of an outstanding senior to be considered by the final selection committee. The J. Woodrow Count Scholarship is awarded for the purpose of advancing a student's education at an institution of higher learning. The recipients are seniors who have earned high academic achievements, demonstrated strong leadership qualities, and possesses a unique combination of talents. Before presenting the award, please allow me a time to give a short biography of Mr. Count. He was born in Bynum, Texas. He grew up there and graduated from Bynum High School. He attended what is now the University of North Texas on a basketball scholarship. After college, he served his country during World War II as a U.S. Naval Officer. In 1945—49, excuse me, Mr. Count began his educational career with Arlington ISD, where he spent 36 years, before retiring as superintendent in 1985. The J. Woodrow Count Administration Building is named in his honor. Mr. Count took great pride in the Arlington schools. He died in October of 2006 at the age of 90. His legacy will live on through scholarships, through his establishment and funds. It is my pleasure to present the 2022 J. Woodrow Count Scholarship recipients. I will call each recipient up, and they will give a few words to briefly share their plans. I would first like to introduce Ms. Aloe Moore from Arlington High School.
Thank you to the school board for giving me the opportunity to express my thanks to the Count's family for being a recipient of the JW Count Scholarship. My name is Aloe Moore. I'm graduating from Arlington High School. My goal is to earn my master's degree in aerospace engineering from the University of Texas at Austin. Aerospace engineering has been a passion of mine ever since I was a little girl, fascinated by aircraft and space exploration. I've been consistently inspired to know that one day I will be able to design craft that can be used to expand the world's knowledge of science, thus making it a better place. The University of Texas at Austin has one of the highest-ranking aerospace engineering departments in the nation, so I've chosen this to be where I start my journey towards becoming an aerospace engineer. I'm a citizen of the Cherokee Nation and recognized by the College Board as a national indigenous scholar, so I'm extremely excited to be attending such a diverse and accepting school where I'll be able to meet other people like me. I'm thrilled to expand the visibility of female Native Americans working in STEM fields. Since September of 2021, when I began my internship at Lockheed Martin through AISD, I have gained much knowledge about the aerospace industry, and my passion for the discipline has only increased. Actively working alongside professional aerospace engineers and being mentored by them has confirmed that this is really what I want to do with my future. From this internship, I've increased my experience and knowledge about the field, and I'm more prepared for my studies towards my future career. I believe that in 10 years, the aerospace and aeronautical engineering industry will have grown exponentially. And with the increased demand for aircraft and spacecraft for both personal, private, and governmental use, I can only imagine the amount of opportunities there will be for me and my future career. I thank you again.
Next up, we will have Erin Blessing-Gang.
Thank you, Board and Dr. Cavassos, for having me, and also a thank you to the Count's family for this wonderful opportunity. I will be attending Purdue University in the fall, majoring in aeronautical and astronautical engineering. I have also had a Lockheed internship through the AISD Practicum Program. And from a young age, I've been encapsulated by NASA in space. I did a program with them called NASA High School Aerospace Scholars, and I also had the opportunity to attend the InterAstra Retreat in March, thanks to Mr. Bowie Hogg, where I met industry leaders in the space industry. And so throughout college, I plan to stay with Lockheed and continue interning with them and explore a career in the space industry, and hopefully with some of the industry leaders that I met at the conference. Thank you.
Please forgive me. Erin was from Martin High School. And our last recipient is Ms. Landry Stevenson from one Sagan High School.
All righty. Good evening to the board and to everyone here. My name is Landry Stevenson, and I'm a graduating senior from—excuse me—Sagan High School. I'm extremely grateful to have received this scholarship, as I plan to attend the University of Texas at Austin. As someone who's a fan of both science and the arts, I'm excited to say that I'll be studying neuroscience, a combination of both the physical and—excuse me—abstract aspects of psychology. From a young age, I've been interested in how the unseen aspects of our lives affect us and who we are as human beings. As an analytical person, I desire to answer the question, why? As I started high school, my love for medicine grew. I could see myself helping others by furthering scientific developments in the world of medicine. However, apart from me from my childhood, that developed a love for psychology never dwindled, and suddenly I was at a crossroads. However, discovering neuroscience has allowed me to satisfy these desires. The arts and sciences do indeed intersect. Continuing my education will help me accomplish my main two goals in life, studying something I love and giving back to my community. Once at UT Austin, I'll put forth my best effort to eventually attend medical school and become a physician. Although I'm unsure of the exact path I'd like to go down, I'm confident that whatever I choose to do will help me do great things for my community. With this scholarship, I've been given extra confidence to live up to UT Austin's mantra, what starts here changes the world. Thank you.
All three recipients received a $1,000 scholarship award. Please help me and congratulate these outstanding students.
Thank you, Ms. Arseneau. Well, I'm feeling pretty confident about our future. Those are three fantastic young women that are going to make remarkable changes out there. So pleased, so pleased. And I love that they're all three—the females—that are going into these fields, right? Yes. Please keep us posted. Let us hear from you. Let us know about your successes, so we can follow those successes as you go through college and then into your different fields. So please don't forget about us. Let us know how you're doing, okay? Thank you. All right. It's now time to recognize our Student Leadership Advisory Board. And Dr. Jarco.
All right. Good evening, Board President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. It's my distinct honor to be here tonight to again introduce to you our 2122 Student Leadership Advisory Board. I have the honor of working with some more fantastic young men and women this year over the course of the school year, and I got to partner with Board Member Hogg to work with these students. So as a reminder, this group of students is made up of our junior class presidents from each of the six traditional schools, a member from Arlington Collegiate, and a member from Arlington College and Career. The purpose of the group of students is to represent Arlington ISD students' opinions and provide the voice of the students to the Board of Trustees and the community at large. Our SLAB members assist in building relationships with students, the Board of Trustees, campuses, senior staff, and also our superintendent. They're assigned to partner board member, and they meet with members of the Board of Trustees, and SLAB members have no official voting rights, but they do have an official Board of Trustees and help assist with business, and also have several very important advisory roles. Some of those roles this year included them stretching their leadership capacity by focusing on civic leadership, primarily with our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, which they were very active in this school year. Several of them attending every single meeting, and our last meeting that occurred at Gunn Junior High, every student was in attendance. By expanding their knowledge about how the community provides input on school district improvements related to the current bond, they've expanded their knowledge of civic responsibilities. They've also went above and beyond attending school board meetings and serving on steering committees for our district. This evening, they worked to update and get feedback from each other on resumes and how to build those appropriately for our college applications for next school year. They're also going to receive some letters of recommendation from each of you for their exemplary service to their respective communities. Tonight, I want to go ahead and to honor those students who have served on our 2122 SLAB committee, so I'm going to ask those members to stand and stay standing while I call their names. So first, from Arlington High School, Jack Kozak. And second, from Sam Houston High School, Esne Uwokala. And we also have several members who couldn't be here tonight. Three of those members are on college visits today, so we're going to recognize those folks as well. From Lamar High School, Marissa Ramos. Yeah, we'll clap for as well. From Arlington College and Collegiate, Mosara Nama Egbenoma. From Arlington College and Career, Cruz Hernandez. From Bowie High School, Mia De Leon. From Sagan High School, Alexis Chuckwinari. And from Martin High School, Jordan Brown. We also have one other student we're going to recognize. He was a last-year SLAB member. His name is William McPhail. William McPhail is the college orientation today. He did not—could get the full experience last year, but he attended every single meeting this year as a senior student, and just wanted the experience, because last year, as many of you know, was a COVID year. I mean, he just didn't feel like he got the full experience last year, and he wanted to have that on his—not only his college application, but also to make sure he got the experience himself. So we're going to also acknowledge William today. He's from Arlington Collegiate. So students—for all the students, I look forward to seeing each of you in our schools. So Jack and Esne definitely look forward to seeing our schools next year, seeing the accomplishments that you have in the future. And on behalf of everyone in the audience tonight, we thank you for your gift of time and service.
Thank you, Dr. Jarco. Well, it's time—I've been stalling as long as I can, Bowie Hogg. It's time to recognize our outgoing trustee, Bowie Hogg. It's a bittersweet night as we say farewell to our friend and former trustee, Bowie Hogg. As you know by now, Mr. Hogg was elected to the Arlington City Council in May, which means he vacated his seat on our school board. Since he joined the board in 2008, 14 years ago, Mr. Hogg has done an amazing job on behalf of our students and staff. He has served as Board Secretary, Vice President, and President throughout his career. He has listened, advocated, and advanced our mission at the state level. Mr. Hogg, we would appreciate all that—you—we appreciate all that you have done tonight, and we want to say thanks by coming down and giving a couple of items to you, but would you like to speak first, or would you like for the board members to roast you? I mean, talk to you.
I thought you were given the opportunity if I wanted to speak or not. I was like, of course I want to speak. I'm an elected official. Why would I not want to speak? If y'all would like to go ahead, please go right ahead. That way, Dr. Reich, I can have last word, is what I'm— I mean, let's be honest, I'm a board member. I've done this a long time. I know how this works.
Yes, indeed, Mr. Hogg. Bowie, it is bittersweet. I have had the the pleasure of serving with you 13 of your 14 years on this board. In that time, you have been consistent with your passion to be a change agent for reform, and I have been able to witness a lot of things that I think you were hopeful to happen actually happened for Arlington, for the community. You're born and bred Arlington. You have served so well. You are a man of conviction. You're not a man of little words.
Not a little anything, you know?
But if there were controversial things to address, you had no problem getting right in the middle of things and addressing those. And with the utmost sincerity, with always the thought of—as I always say, as a trustee, our biggest job is looking at the forest through the trees. And from a strategy and that perspective, that's—you. That's what you did all the time. We, as a board, realize and appreciate efficiencies in our meetings and our structure and our communications process because of the ideas and the thoughts that you pushed for, and ultimately, everybody was in agreement. For me, I think one of the the pentacles for—a testimony for who you are. You were leading this board when we were the Honor Board, the Board of the Year—double Board of the Year for HEB and TASSA—TASB. Never has happened before, hasn't happened since for a board. You were at the helm for that. A lot of the—the distance that we got in those interview processes was because of some of the reforms and the efficiencies and the things that you were very passionate about in creating a better environment for us to govern. And ultimately, the things that you have a legacy to leave behind has—it's literally changed the face of Arlington and Arlington youth and the opportunities and the access to those opportunities. Not easy, a lot of time. I thank—I thank your family, apologized to your family. Now you've got a whole new group of people to blame for him not being around. But in all sincerity, thank you for allowing your son, husband, father to help and do really God's work in our community. I really appreciate everything about you. I know that we will stay in in communication constantly. Now we've got a really good ally on council, so there's going to be some—I mean, we work well together. It's going to be even better. So I'm looking forward to that. It is bittersweet to not have you up here on the dais. It's been—it's been wonderful, my friend, and it's a—it's—it's special for me to be able to call you friend. And you have not just 56,000 to 65,000 children that you have done amazing, remarkable work for. You have generations. I mean, lifelong, your entire life, there's generation after generation that the things that you put forth specifically, people are reaping the benefits. Arlington's reaping the benefits. All those children, all those families, for generations. That's pretty big. And I—I look at all of the things that we've been able to accomplish as a district, and whether good or bad, your hand was in it.
Very true. Very true.
Going to miss you. I know we're we're not getting too far away from you, but it's—it's been wonderful to serve with you in advocacy, in leadership, and just care and compassion for the community. People may have agreed or may have disagreed with you. I don't think anybody would ever say that your heart was not in the right place. And I am so thankful and grateful to be able to have served with you and and worked with you through so many things over the years. So Godspeed, my friend.
Thank you, friend.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. Mr. Hogg, as many of you guys know, I tried to Noah Bell to sabotage his campaign for city council, because we've only served three short years on this board together, and you've been an outstanding mentor, and I have lots more to learn from you, and now you're gone. But that mentorship goes back all the way back to 2011, when I was brand-new on the Financial Futures Committee and knew lickety-split about school finance, and you kind of took me under your wing. I think you were kind of forced to, because we were always next to each other, but you really showed me the ropes, and that's continued, you know, through our time together on this board, and it's been really valuable. I don't—you know, one of my favorite compliments to give people, and maybe your mom will appreciate this word—I know you don't—is there are very few people that I think that are really sagacious out there, and you are the definition of sagacious. You have this keen discernment that you bring, and you cut straight through to the solution on any problem or anything that we're discussing. Your brilliance in in terms of just being able to break down an issue and get to the heart of the matter is unparalleled. And not only that, but your governance acumen that you bring—that you brought to this governing body, there was—that's where I'm really going to miss you, because you—you brought a lot to the table and helped, as my colleague, Dr. Reich, pointed out, you know, I think a big reason why your—this school board was voted, School Board of the Year, was a lot of that acumen you brought to the table in terms of governance, and that will be missed. I realize the city council is in use—is in need of some good governance acumen, and so I reluctantly will let you go to that organization, because you've been a great great member of this board, and and as my colleague, Dr. Reich, has already pointed out, you know, your footprint here, you're—you're leaving very big footprints, you know, like everything you do. And you've touched a lot of lives, and so now it's time for you to do the same for the city, so go get them.
Thank you.
I looked up sagacious, I know what it means now.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mr. Will Banks, can you use that word in a sentence, please?
He probably can. Don't—I—the rest of us can't.
Mr. Hogg, I just want to say, for the eight years that I have been on this board, you have been on this board. Ever since the very beginning, you were very open-armed. You were always open for a phone call, for a question, and for that, I appreciated. One thing that I can say that I respect greatly about you, and your mom is a testament for raising these—all those young men in your house, but you love your mom, and that earned my respect immediately. In addition to that, you started on the board—no children. You're leaving the board with two beautiful young girls, but your desire to create policy and do things to help the students of AISD didn't change. It was just as strong before you had your children as it was afterwards. I think that's a great testament for you, the time that you had here on the board. I'm very happy to see you move to the city of Arlington on their council, because that's what you wanted to do, the same way that you did great things here. I know that you're going to do great things there. And I have to say, I need just one more time in this room for you and I to say at the same time, "Whoop!"
I was disappointed, all these UTEP students that are going, you know? We were ready, Ms. Mays. We were ready.
I love them, I love them, but I'm going—I'm going to wish—miss my second on that "whoop." I really will. But once again, congratulations to you, and we do look forward to the things that you're going to do, and we will continue to support you, as we would like for you to continue to support us. So congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Do we have any other requesters? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. Bowie, I—it's so strange, just looking at you from this—this perspective.
It's the first time I've ever stood on this side.
I'm kind of enjoying it. My first year of teaching in AISD was your first year as trustee, and before you know it, it's been 14 years. Both of us have aged rapidly, for various reasons.
Very true.
But I sure am glad with the timing that your last year as trustee coincided with Bowie, you're a courageous leader. You took your role and responsibilities very seriously, yet you carry laughter with you wherever you go. All the accomplishments that have been mentioned already, my favorite thing that you did as a trustee was, now guess this here superintendent? My very favorite thing. Your wife, Leslie, and your two girls are the driving force behind all you do, as Ms. Mays puts so eloquently. And I love how that shines through in the way that you lead and the man that you are. And I know that when you go to city council, that will continue in an even greater capacity. When you told me you were running for city council, as sad as I was at the thought of you leaving our school board, for our students, for—for us as a team of eight, this move made perfect sense. It makes perfect sense for so many reasons. Thank you for your service, both in the past and in the future, and go do great things. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Bowie, it—I didn't know that—I didn't expect that this day would come anytime soon. I—and like everyone else has said, I'm glad that you made the decision to do this, because I think that's where your heart and your your skill set has led you. You're going to be a great asset to the city council. And, you know, going back quite a quite a ways, you know, for a short time when I was in college, I—I was able to ride the coattails of your celebrity just a little bit, because there was a TV show that came out in college called The Apprentice. a TV show that came out in college called The Apprentice, and my roommates and I started watching it, and lo and behold, there was someone on there, uh, from Arlington, Texas, and it was Bowie Hogg, and so of course, I had to pull for Bowie Hogg.
Sorry I let you down on that one, didn't go far enough, so.
Fast forward just a few years later, and had moved back to Arlington and signed up for the Financial Futures Committee with, turned out, met Mr. Will Banks there, and Ms. Mays was involved in cities and committees at the time, and I also met you because you had been on the board for just a couple of years at that point, and, um, you were on the Community Engagement Committee, and you sat through lots of those meetings, and I got to know you through that, and, uh, it, in, in a lot of ways, I feel like, been working with you now for, for well over a decade, um, have nothing but respect for what you achieve on the board. Dr. Raish documented that really well. Um, got to know you also as a friend. I would say, we started attending, or we started attending church with you, I was in your Sunday School class for a while. Um, on a personal note, I mean, it was an, uh, an honor for my family, um, when you were baptized in, in our house. Um, and I have, you know, have always respected your opinion, um, did not know that I'd become your colleague, uh, you know, at the time that it did, I'm glad that it did. I've learned a lot from you, you've done a lot for this district. Um, certainly you and I have, have not agreed on everything.
Okay.
Um, but I would be disingenuous if I didn't say, uh, that, um, I do consider you a friend. Um, you're gonna go on and do great things for the city, I look forward to working with you, uh, in that capacity as well, but I look also forward to seeing what you're gonna do for the, this community, um, going forward for, for a long time to come. Enjoyed serving with you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. Bowie Hogg, well, this is a rare opportunity.
Yeah.
He has to stand there, and it is actually enjoyable, no. Uh, Bowie, so, um, a lot has been said, and, uh, it's with gratitude that I express my thanks to you for your service to Arlington I S D. Um, you know, a lot of people don't know that we meet individually a lot, superintendent and board members, and Bowie and I meet for early morning breakfast, and I, while I enjoy all our one-on-one meetings, this is not a slide on anybody else, sure, but Bowie's were fun, because, because we're able to, uh, just transparently talk, uh, about a lot of things, school, non-school, et cetera, and Bowie always has ideas, and I always have ideas, and then, uh, we get to a certain point where we calibrate some of those things, and Bowie, I just thank you for really expanding my thought process. Uh, you're a force, but you're a very genuine force, and you've done that for this board and for me, uh, and for this community, and for Arlington I S D, and our students are better for it. I often say, you'll never know the impact you've had on students, and Bowie, that's true of you. Um, you, you have, um, helped us in the district, helped me, to continue to move forward in an, in a real innovative way. Um, and, and oftentimes, uh, your ideas, your thoughts, your planting the seed, and Bowie would always say, I'm just planting a seed, you know, and yeah, uh-huh, yeah, we've known that, we know Bowie Hogg, um, and it's just, it's special, and I'm, I'm gonna miss that, but, uh, know that, that I carry that with me, and know that we will continue to, to communicate and be in, in constant communication, but you're gonna do that for the city, and that's exciting, uh, to us and to me, uh, because living in Arlington, I, I want Arlington to continue to grow and be better, and you're gonna do that. Uh, I did know your mom before I knew you, Bowie, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for Ms. Hogg, um, and I knew her as a teacher and as a friend, and then eventually got to know you, and as Ms. Mays said, your relationship with your family is, is honorable, and something to really, for us all to aspire, so thank you to your family for, for Bowie Hogg, and I just thank you as a friend, Bowie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Bowie, I'm gonna miss you. I've loved sitting next to you the last couple of years. I thank you for your knowledge, I thank you for your humor, and I thank you for your friendship. You've been a really good friend, and I appreciate it so much. You're always there, if I needed to, to call, or if I needed to ask a question, or needed your advice on something, you were always there, and I will always appreciate that. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
We're gonna miss you. Stay right there, we're gonna come down.
Hold on, don't, don't I get a talk?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, my turn.
I made sure I was getting the last word.
You get two minutes.
If that timer goes off, Ms. Benjamin, we got, we're gonna have words. I'm gonna figure out how the zoning ordinance doesn't work for y'all, so. Numerous of y'all that could make it, make it, made it to my swearing-in for City Council on the seventeenth. There's only been a few times in my life, I'm not a super emotional person, and I probably should've spoken first because y'all got me a little emotional tonight. You know, I remember the times in my life where I've been emotional, and shown tears and shown those things. My grandmother died, my brother was killed, my dad died. The saddest movie I ever saw in seventh grade, Old Yeller, was played, and I cried in class, still the saddest movie. I thought I cried, but my wife said I just sweat the day I was married, and then the day my children were born, and then the other night when I got sworn in to the City Council. And it hit me when I was talking about you guys and Dr. Cavassos. It hit me because this has been such an important thing that I've done in my life, and it's been so critical to who I am as a man, and who I give back to, to the city that gave me so much in my life. I started off and I said, I told my wife, I said, "This is the greatest honor I've had in my life." And she immediately corrected me like she normally does and said, "The greatest honor?" I said, "I mean, of course, after getting married and our children," and so she corrected me to say it's one of the greatest honors in my life, and it is. I'm the son of two public school teachers, and I'm very proud of that. One of them's my mother sits here, who taught at Shackleton Junior High for, I don't know how many, twenty-seven, twenty-eight years, somewhere around there, and retired, and my dad who taught at Diamond Hill Jarvis High School on the north side of Fort Worth. I'm the youngest of four boys who all graduated from their Arlington I S D. My brother set the precedence before me. Somehow, someway, as Mr. Chapa said, I'd moved to Arlington, next thing I know, I've moved to New York, and I'm on a show and fired by who now the President of the United, former President of the United States. Never would I dreamed. I was approached to do different things, multiple things, and I knew I wanted to get involved in the city, and I knew I wanted to make Arlington my home forever. And somehow, someway, at the age of thirty, unmarried, no kids, I looked up and I thought this district was very reactive and not proactive, and we needed some change. And somehow, someway, someone convinced me to run for the school board. I had the honor of serving for fourteen years, getting elected in two thousand eight, being re-elected in two thousand eleven, two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand twenty. We focused on student achievement. That was our focus. We developed new strategic plans that district had never, hadn't done in years, and it was all about helping our students and community offer the best education possible. I spent a total of twenty-seven years in the A I S D. Dr. Cavassos, that qualified me as a retiree. Thirteen years as a student in these halls that I love so much, and then fourteen years serving all the students in the I S D. None of that happens if we don't thank our teachers and our staff in this district. They're the drivers in this district. They are the most important asset in this district, and they always will. They daily change the lives of young men and women, and people sometimes think the board loses that prep, that focus, and I can tell you, it's not true. This board, you guys I've served with, the twenty or so other individuals, it's always been the focus. Sometimes you may not agree, but it's always the focus, because anything we plan or any policy we create is nothing, and it doesn't come to fruition, and it doesn't make a difference if the teachers and staff don't focus on it and have the true impact daily in our classrooms. I had the honor, as Dr. Raish said, of serving as board president. We won Board of the Year for the Texas Association of School Administrators and H E B Excellence in Education Board of the Year, and like any good opportunity in front of a thousand people, I asked Charles Butch of the H E B Grocery Store if that guaranteed we got an H E B Grocery Store in Arlington, and that didn't come to fruition. But sometimes you have to ask. As a board, sometimes you have to ask. Sometimes you have to advocate for things. You have to work the legislature, because if you don't think public education is under attack, you're fooling yourself, and you better have as many advocates as you can out there, because public education is under attack. And if you wanna solve this country, public education is the key, and I'll always believe that and never not believe that. We talk about the teachers, we talk about doing it for the students, but then I look in this room and I saw so many, and I had the senior staff that came in, the hard work they do, it's hard leaving the classroom as an administrator. It's very difficult, and they dedicate, and they've always had the right focus. We don't always agree, and that's okay, that's the great thing, but they're always focused. From our senior staff, our curriculum staff, everyone, to individuals like Lisa Benjamin, who I couldn't thank enough for everything she's done. People don't know how much she does for the board, how much she just keeps us sane on those rough meetings some days. Sometimes her support and her hug goes a long way. Lisa, thank you to yourself and all support staff in this district for what you've done. Let me give a special thank you to maybe the most important people in this district, our superintendents. I've had the honor to serve with three. Hector Montenegro, Jerry McCullough, and Marcelo Cavassos. All three good men, all three have brought different things to the board. Jerry stabilized this district, and I thank him for that, and he worked really hard. And then, we needed a super proactive leader, and it was tough. We were trying to decide. We had a board member that wasn't sure, and I said, "I will walk you around and introduce you to every single board member at the state conference." Every single superintendent, I did, and he came back and said, "We should hire Cavassos." I said, "I agree." Dr. Cavassos, you mean the world to me. This board member knows, I don't hide my feelings, how important you are to this district. You're critical to the success. We have always a lot of ideas, some of them are good, and sometimes they're my ideas, which are a little out there, but you always find a way to say, "What are we trying to do, and where's the outcome?" I always say you're the best superintendent in the country, and I believe it. I believe every second of it. I believe there's no one more important of who I'd want leading this district than you, and let's not fool ourselves, you lead this district. When you came on, remember, we had a couple of questions, like, "Is he gonna do this well? Is he gonna do this well?" And guess what? Those things we questioned, you thrived. You were even better. We were like, "We haven't heard him speak a whole lot, how good of a speaker is he?" Well, boy, were we wrong on that one. You're one of the most calming people in this district, and your leadership and your guidance for these kids is amazing. Thank you for all you do, and don't leave. Well, at least you didn't leave under my clock, so I'm, I'm gonna take it under that. To my colleagues, I've served with numerous, from Jim Ash and Sheri Wade, who served as mentors to me, and helped me as a young thirty-year-old kid coming on a board, and we always say, brand-new board members, the hardest thing they know is the first six months they find out how much you can't do, and how much Austin regulates. Jim Ash, Sheri Wade, Mike O'Donnell, they taught me so much. Wayne Ogilvy taught me how to really jockey in position from the dais, of how to get things passed and how to be in politics. From Gloria Peña, who was always insightful, always asked every tough question, to Peter Barron, who held things close to the chest but always thought things through, to Kristen Hudson, Polly Walton, who helped me think of things differently, who helped have the conversation, who didn't have the same mindset, but who always were willing to have a discussion and talk it through, to John Hibbs and Jamie Solins, who really helped me tackle huge challenges and huge task that we were going after, to convincing them to run for the board and saying you're needed for this board. Then we get to you guys. Sarah McMorrow, I still say to this day, you're one of the best board members I've ever seen come on in her first year, and what a first year we had. It was a hard first year, and to watch you stand and watch you formulate who you are, it's hard. It's really difficult, I'm proud of you. David Will Banks, you always ask the question, and then you ask another one, and then you ask another one, and another one, and your questions are always right on. Sometimes it takes a bit to get, but David, I always tell people, I said, "Sometimes David's so smart, I don't know if I understand him." And David, you are right there. Your heart is so strong, from the days when you told us and you identified, "We need more G T," and you were exactly right. As a dad in this district, you started it, and you've brought so much to this district. You're a great board member, and you're getting even better every single day. Melody Fowler, to the numerous times I had to say, "I'm like your little brother who's gonna keep pestering you and call you out on things, but we're gonna work on it," and we did. We always would talk it through. We would always find it out. Sometimes we had to have tough discussions with each other, and sometimes you wanted to strangle me, but that's okay, it's a good thing, it makes us all better. It makes us on the focus, and I'm proud to see you sitting up there as board president. I think you're gonna lead the district well, I think you're gonna do a great, great job, and we should be very proud to have you representing the district. Mr. Chapa, my friend, we are friends, and we both have a love for this district. The three of us right over here all grew up in this district, and we love this district. And I tell everyone, even when we were having heated discussions, I said, "You never questioned Justin Chapa's intent, ever, to this day." He loves this district. We may disagree, but there's also a lot of things we agree on, and we worked hard for these kids. You're a friend. You're one of the smartest individuals I've ever met in my life, sometimes too smart that it made me work a little harder to figure out how to counter you sometimes. But I never once questioned your love for this district. I never once questioned your friendship. I never once questioned the greatness that makes boards and democracy work, is we can disagree, and then we can talk to each other afterwards and hash it out, and still have the same goal of where we're trying to go. You're a great asset to this board, you're a great asset to this district. I remember meeting you the very first time, I think it was the first time when you won the Long Tall Texan Award at graduation. I said, "Who's this? He's like twenty-three or something when he won it? You were young to win that." And I heard about you, and I immediately knew, and I was proud the day we appointed you to this board, because we needed you on that board at that time. Thank you for all you've done. Ms. Mays, we've served a long time together, we've been through a lot together. Sometimes you hold it so close to the chest, I'm like, "Tell me what you're really thinking, Keisha. I need a hard opinion on this." And I wondered it because I always valued your opinion so much. I knew you gave me a different perspective. I knew you were so helpful in making me think through, because sometimes I just have to talk things through to get to my solution, and sometimes I think you thought, "How long is this guy gonna talk?" Probably tonight, my wife's thinking that right now, um, but thank you, thank you. You have given so much to this district. We gotta campaign together, we gotta get re-elected together, and we had to convince each other, keep serving on this board, and I'll say it again to you, keep serving on this board. The district needs you. Dr. Raish has saved you for last. We served thirteen years together. What an amazing thirteen years. What a long, hard thirteen years. I tell people, school board work, and you and I have talked about this a lot, it's the most difficult work I've ever done in my life, but it's also the most rewarding work, and having someone you can rely on, that you work with every single day, that we know what the history has been, where we've come from, what we're trying to do, it means a lot. It means a lot for a lifelong friend, someone I didn't know. I heard some doctors running, and I said, "What? What is he? Who, who is Aaron Raish?" And I immediately met you and realized, he's got the focus, he's got the intent, he's gonna be a great trustee, and from day one, we started working together for the last thirteen years. Leaving friends like you is probably the hardest part of this. It's difficult, it's a lot harder than I thought, and I thank you for all your work, and I know you're gonna continue on, and because of leadership from you and the rest of this board, it gave me when they asked me to run, and I really started considering it. I knew this board is about all the individuals on that board, and it's all the individuals who served before. And it's all the individuals who served before. And it's all the individuals that serve after, that are important to this board. I thank you all for that support. And the last thing I have to thank. And the most important part of my life came during my tenure on this board. I used to have zero gray hair when I got elected to this board. So it's either the school board or my wife and children that came about. I had the honor of meeting my wife and marrying my wife while I was on this school board. There's nothing more important. It is the greatest honor. And then I had two, as a former teacher in this board also, in this district. I, I was like, there's no way I'm marrying a teacher. You know, you don't want to marry someone like your mother. Oh, look what happened, so. I married my wife Leslie, and it was the best decision I ever made. And then we had our two amazing daughters, Helen and Ellis. Hi, girls. They look like they're fun. They've never known me not to be on a board. They've never known me not to be on the school board. They don't really know what the school board still does. Sometimes I don't either. But all the work that came in took a whole new turn when I had children. I was glad to serve without children. I was even more glad to serve with children. I'm proud to have my daughters as current AISD students and second, about, I'm sorry, third grade now and first graders. They're what we work for. Those two kids and the other fifty-six-plus thousand that are in this district. I am going over to city council. I've already started the tenure as I'm wearing both my pens tonight. Little double duty. But I'll always be an advocate for the AISD. I'm hoping to help bridge that gap between the city and the school district, and that's my goal. And we've got to enhance the relationship because we all win together. And that's always been my focus. I've always tried to work with entire group, an entire team. And even when people disagree, bring us together. Service to my community may be one of the most important things I do. See, Leslie, I got it, right? And I thank my wife and my children for allowing me this time away. And my wife said it the best. She said, would I rather have you at home? Yes. But I also understand how important this is to you. And what it does for you and makes you better to give back to your community. And I just thank the community for trusting me to serve, because that's what it is. It's a trust. My cell phone's out there. It's been on the district website forever, and it's out there on the city's website. So you can't ever find me. I have a name, Bowie Hogg, and I can't ever hide because you can Google anything about me, and there's not a lot to hide. This has been one of the greatest honors of my life. I've made some of the greatest friendships in my life, and we've made impacts on kids' lives. Thank you so much for allowing me to serve, and thank you for giving me the honor to serve. Thank you.
Bowie, if you and your family will stay there, we'd like to come down and, and give you some things.
And sorry for going long, folks, science. It's just what we do. It's my last one.
No, you, no, just grab the mic.
All right. For the first thing we'd like to do is we have, yes, y'all, come on up, come on up. I've asked Dr. Raish to read a resolution that has been sent by Representative Chris Turner.
Yes, this is an official House of Representatives State of Texas Resolution. Whereas Bowie Hogg is concluding his tenure as a board member for the Arlington Independent School District in 2022. And whereas, first elected in May 2008, Mr. Hogg most recently served as the board's vice president. While in office, he worked closely with this, with school administrators, teachers, parents, and concerned citizens to foster a supportive and challenging environment at district schools. And whereas Mr. Hogg graduated from Arlington High School in 1996. And he went on to attend Texas A&amp;M University. There we go. Where he earned a bachelor's degree in business administration. He is vice president of the motion sensor and computer vision technology firm Hinge Health. Active in his community. He has served on the boards of numerous organizations, including Downtown Arlington, United Way of Tarrant County, the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce, and the Texas Association of School Boards. And whereas, Mr. Hogg is stepping down from the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees in order to begin his term as a member of the Arlington City Council, to which he was elected on May 7, 2022. Congratulations again. And whereas Bowie Hogg has demonstrated a steadfast commitment to the success of Arlington ISD and his dedicated efforts in behalf of, in behalf of area students, have earned him the lasting admiration and appreciation of his fellow citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Bowie Hogg be commended for his service as a board member of the Arlington Independent School District, and that he be extended sincere best wishes for the future. Signed, the Honorable Chris Turner, State Representative, District 101.
Bowie, this is a flag that has been flown over the Texas House of Representatives Capitol. And it was flown in May, May 13, in appreciation for your service on the AISD Board of Trustees. And it's presented to you tonight, so congratulations.
Bowie, here I have a certificate of appreciation for your fourteen years of service to AISD students, staff, and community.
And we have this child-themed plaque. It says, thank you for your loyal service to the children of Arlington ISD Bowie Hogg. Arlington ISD Board of Trustees, 2008 to 2022. It is a ladder, holding up other, actually, these are children, holding up the children, which is what he has done for all of his time. So thank you very much.
And now probably the most important gift we have is to Leslie. In appreciation for fourteen years of service to the Arlington ISD students, staff, and community, thank you, Leslie Hogg. All right, can we get a group picture?
I bet we can.
And now a thank you to Mrs. Keisha Mays. Tonight, I want to say a special thank you to Keisha Mays, who led this board for the past three years. Mrs. Mays is a staunch advocate for education for children, and it showed every day she served in her role as president. She led the board with courage, conviction, and collaboration through three of the most difficult years in the history of public education. We are all better for her love of students and her leadership. Thank you, Mrs. Mays, for your service, and we look forward to continuing to work beside you. And if you'll come down, I have, we have something for you. It says, Keisha Mays, Arlington ISD Board of Trustees, President, 2019 to 2022. In recognition of your outstanding service and commitment to the children, families, and staff of the AISD. Thank you, Mrs. Mays.
Okay. That's been quite eventful. It's now time for appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. This evening, I would like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for the principal of Seguin High School.
Thank you, President Fowler. At this time, I move that we ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Chapa. By Ms. Mays. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion carries six, motion carries by si- six, what? Can I not vote? Oh, there's only six of us, sorry. Motion carries.
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we'll introduce, and he's already working, the principal of Seguin High School, Mr. Billy Linson. Give him a round of applause. And you'll see his information. He's most recently an assistant principal at Seguin High School, has served as an assistant principal at Young Junior High as well, and an economics teacher and coach at Bowie High School. Has also taught world history and world geography. Mr. Linson, congratulations to him, being the new principal of Seguin High School.
Next on our agenda are the public hearings. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And at this time, we would like to have a public hearing related to the optional flexible school day program. And I'll invite Dr. Words to lead us through that process. Dr. Words.
Good evening, President Fowler. That's the first time I had to say that. Nice to see you, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. During the 2122 school year, three hundred and thirteen students who enrolled as flexible students attended students at 600 New York, completing fourteen hundred and eighty-two classes. Seven additional students remained at their home campus for instruction, a total of three hundred and twenty students participated in the optional, optional flexible school day program. This year, a hundred and sixty of those students graduated. Eighty-seven students are currently still enrolled at either the dropout prevention center or their home campus. Fifty-one students have dropped out. Those students were among the most vulnerable students in the district and include students who have completed all coursework but have not passed their state mandated tests. During the 2122 academic school year, a hundred students were enrolled as flexible student, attended students at the Arlington Collegiate High School, participating in the optional, optional flexible school day program. All these students graduated in June, will graduate this month, actually, this week, coming week in June 2022. They will be able to participate in a variety of college courses and were able to do so during the school year, offered during the traditional school hours as well as non-traditional hours. Optional flexible school day program allowed students to participate in non-traditional course times that included evening classes, Saturday classes, and online classes. Students had the flexibility to take courses at the Arlington Collegiate High School, the Dan Diaper Career Tech Center, multiple Tarrant County college campuses, Texas Wesleyan University, and the University of Texas at Arlington. This flexibility helped all students to acquire their high school diplomas, as well as allowing most of the class of 2022 to earn their associate's degree.
Thank you, Dr. Words. And Ms. Benjamin, do we have, since this is a public, um, public hearing, do we have any speakers registered to, to speak?
No, ma'am, we have no registered speakers for this portion.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. We have no registered speakers. The public hearing on optional flexible day, school day program 2021, 2022 is now closed. Hang on, Dr. Words.
No problem.
Don't go anywhere. Um, next, we will open our public hearing on optional flexible school day program 2022, 2023.
Thank you, President Fowler, and again, handing, handing it over to Dr. Words to lead us through this public hearing for 2223.
All right, good evening again. So the optional flexible school day program was implemented for students in grades nine through twelve, who are, one, at risk of dropping out of school, two, participating in an early college-high school plan, three, attending a state-approved innovative redesigned school, or, and/or, four, acquire the, require the alternate academic route due to denial of credit in one or more classes because of not meeting state attendance requirements. For the upcoming year, we will continue to rely on this program for our district's early college-high school students, venture students, and traditional high school students needing a flexible schedule. In doing so, the optional flexible school day program will grant students in these transformational programs access to a flexible schedule beyond that of the traditional hundred and eighty-day, five-day-a-week requirement, including courses on the weekends, night classes, extended-day classes, and flexible schedules throughout the year to accommodate courses beyond the traditional eighteen-week semester. Under the optional flexible school day program designation, the school district may receive funding based on the actual time a student is in attendance, from as low as forty-five minutes a day to a maximum of ten hours a day. Minutes are accumulated to a maximum, to maximize the average daily attendance a student can earn during the twelve-month period, and students must apply to participate. They must meet eligibility requirements and can be afforded certified instructors in all educational services for which they are eligible, as well as comply with the appropriate assessments during the regularly scheduled assessment period.
Thank you, Dr. Words. And I think it's important for people to know that we offer this in our district. We don't want students dropping out and going away. We have flexible optional programs for them, and I think that's very important. And I, I appreciate you and your team putting, always putting that together and, and presenting it to us. Thank you.
Happy to do so.
Ms. Benjamin, since this is a public hearing, do we have anyone registered that would like to speak?
No, ma'am, we do not.
We have no registered speakers. The public hearing on optional flexible, flexible school day program 20- school day program 2022-2023 is now closed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. We now come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker request, no later than 3:00 p.m., the day of the board meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No, ma'am, we have no registered speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Our next action item is to consider filling the trustee vacancy. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And as you know, we have a trustee vacancy. And at this time, the board can entertain filling that vacancy. It's on the agenda for your consideration.
Ms. Mays?
Let me try again. Thank you, President Fowler. After discussion of our options and then additional discussion of the option that we selected as a board to appoint an individual, then after discussion of an individual and the things that this board and this district needs at this particular time, I would like to make a motion to move to appoint John Hibbs to fill the trustee vacancy until the May 2023 election.
I have a motion by Mrs. Mays and a second by Dr. Raich. Any discussion? Please vote. And the motion carries. Our appointed trustee will be Mr. John Hibbs. So glad to see John coming back. I only had the, I was only fortunate enough, I think, to serve maybe one year with him before he stepped down, but looking forward to working with him and him being part of our team. Motion carries. Is Mr. Hibbs still on? Wonderful. There he is. Where is he? Oh, 3:20. John, we can't hear you.
How about that?
That's better.
Well, chow from Italy at 3:20 in the morning. It's been a great meeting. I'm looking forward to working with each one of you again. Thank you, it's an honor to have been asked. And I hope that I can come in and assist this board this next year and doing some great things for our district.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. We so look forward to working with you again. And please, go back to sleep. That's a trooper. Three, what'd he say, 3:20 a.m.? And there he is, up, ready to work with us. That's a trooper. Ready for school. Now, where are we? Discussion action item A. We have discussion action item A, consider authorization of advertisement of notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, President Fowler, trustees, Dr. Cavassos. I have a brief presentation here. It's fairly routine for the board on our notice of public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate. So, here you see a three-year comparison. Our M&amp;O, maintenance and operations tax rate has been compressed by the state for the last three years. If you take a look at the interest and sinking rate proposed, there's no change that we're proposing in the notice. And for our '22-23 proposed column there, we're proposing 1.0601 for M&amp;O, 0.3007 for interest and sinking, for a total of 1.3608. We're proposing this rate to be posted in the notice. As we've shared with you before, we have projected what we think we will land at, and that's shown in the last column there, the 1.0576. The budget that we're, the preliminary budget that we're looking at includes that information for the projected column. The 0.3007 interest and sinking is in our debt service budget and a total of 1.3583. The required rate comparisons are here. That VATR, our voter approval tax rate, is the maximum rate that a board can adopt without going out for a vote or an election. And you will see that what we're proposing is under that amount. Our current year rate is shown on that slide as well. This is just a picture of our appraised and taxable values. The July certified tax year appraised value is $46.1 billion, and the taxable value is $34.9 billion. Our April preliminary estimates, again, this is kind of comparing apples to oranges, is $50 billion appraised and $38.5 billion taxable value. And again, our projection is that $36.8 billion based on the information that we have right now. This is our budget and tax rate calendar. If the board approves the notice to be posted, it will post on June the 6th. June the 19th is our deadline to propose a budget to you. And the hearing is in line to be done on June the 21st. July 25th, we received the certified values from the appraisal district. And between July 18th somewhere and August the 1st, we'll submit information to TEA for them to calculate that MCR that we've been talking about as well. The tax rate will not be adopted until August. At that time, we'll have the information. We'll know what the MCR is, and at that time, we can post or adopt the tax rate. And administration recommends the authorization of the advertisement of the notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate.
Thank you, Mrs. Moss. Do I have a motion to accept?
Okay, thank you, President Fowler. Yeah, I'm prepared to make the motion. On the publication of the tax rates and the budget discussion, et cetera, what are our legal requirements now? Do we still have to do it in a local newspaper? Is it just online? What are the rules now?
We do have to post it in a local newspaper, and it will post in the Star Telegram on the 6th.
Okay, okay. That's what I thought. I just know that with the shrinkage of print media, I didn't know if that law is going to change or if that's something we would need to look into. So, I was just curious about that.
And we do hope that it changes. It is a cost to the district. And we have website available. But as of now, we do have to post it.
Still the law. Very good, thank you. With that, I do move that the board approve the publication of the notice of the public meeting to discuss the budget and the proposed tax rate for the 2022 tax year.
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Raich. Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. A motion by Dr. Raich, seconded by Mr. Will Banks. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Moss.
Thank you.
We'll now move to our consent agenda. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring for your consideration various consent items tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda? Mr. Will Banks?
I would like to discuss the Lamar High School. I had one quick question on that after the vote. We can discuss it. On the PTEC contract for renovations.
You're not pulling it?
No, I just have a question. So, I can either ask it now or after we vote.
Yeah, we can ask now.
It is questions for Mr. Horn. So, in our packet, I don't think there was information... I'm sorry, I had questions in my other packet I received earlier, so I don't have them in front of us. So, where exactly and what's the extent of the renovations under this contract at Lamar?
Okay, we, like we've done with, previously with Bowie, we've selected a particular area. Their principal has, actually, a particular part of one wing over, that's kind of hard to describe. But yeah, it's more to, yeah, front entrance and to the right of the bill of that area. And there's approximately eight classrooms that we will take and renovate to have a little bit more of a modern feel, something a little different than just a standard classroom feel. And so, the extent of it will involve painting and changing of display boards and that sort of thing to change the appearance of that area.
Okay, and so when you say front entrance, you're talking along Lamar Boulevard or in the back?
No, front entrance from the office. From the office, okay. And also to have some designation for a PTEC in terms of just to, so you can locate it, basically? It's a school within a school. But also, it's kind of the beginning because it'll take more rooms and different things at some point. But right now, it's to have that beginning. Like Bowie High School.
All right, so this isn't for the, you know, what we envisioned because it does, you know, I did question it was a pretty small amount, so.
And it is. It's really just as a recognition, the students will also be taking classes at Lamar High School, obviously a school within a school. So, these are only the classes they'll be using for specifically PTEC. Then they'll be taking other classes. And then at the community college and all this other stuff at the work site, et cetera. Yeah, it's so they can have some signage and appearance.
No, that was the extent of my question. Just wanted to clarify where it was and why it seemed a little bit lower than what would probably be justified.
Yeah, we, this is about the range that we've set aside for each of the PTEC programs. And we're trying to stay within that. But it's really more finish upgrades than anything. It just sets a different tone as we go in. So, it's not a full-on renovation.
Yeah, and while the students are co-horted, they eventually do take classes all over Lamar High School. So, that's why this is more of a gathering area where they take some of the classes as a group.
All right, thank you, Mr. Horn.
Thank you, Mr. Horn, for your clarification.
I move approval for the consent agenda.
All right, I have a first by Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Raich. Any other discussion? Please vote. Motion carries. We're now at discussion item A, 2022-2023 preliminary budget report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring a continuation of this discussion item of our '22-23 budget development and actually budget progress of where we are now. Obviously, the board made a decision last meeting to include compensation. So, that's a big piece of this budget preparation. So, that is now in this budget update. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Moss.
Thank you. And so, this is, like I said, our fourth budget planning update to you, and we have included now that 4% increase in the information. So, some of this will be repeat information that you seen. We'll go through it fairly quickly. So, this is the timeline. Of course, we, the board already voted on the notice, and we're discussing that tonight on the 2nd. On the 6th, that notice will be posted. And on the 21st, we'll have the hearing and adopt the budget on the 21st. Tonight, we'll focus on the general operating budget and the impact of that 4% increase. Some of the assumptions, again, these have not changed. We're looking at a 5.29% property value increase based on our projection. Again, we'll put a disclaimer out there. We projected that amount based on what we know right now. Once we get to our values, that could change one way or the other. The M&amp;O tax rate reduction of 1.0576, excuse me, and the enrollment decrease of 708 students for a total of 55603 is what we're projecting. That attendance rate, again, we've shared before, is 91.5%. And we have some federal revenue, the ESER indirect costs and the SHARs that are included in the budget. As far as our positions for the budget, general operating, we're looking at 7,439 positions that are included currently. We have 51 additional pre-K teachers and 51 assistants. And again, if you'll recall, that is based on fund balance that was assigned earlier and then just the normal staffing ratio adjustments. And so, this is a look at the chart that you saw last couple of weeks ago. The preliminary budget column is the only one that has changed. Small changes in the revenue and then just the changes for the salary adjustment and the expenditure column for a total of $32.1 million deficit for the next year's budget. I'll pause right there if there are any questions about that chart.
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Ms. Moss, does this deficit that's projected here include the ESER stabilization funds that we set aside?
It does.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Dr. Raich?
Thank you, President Fowler. This might be an unfair question. So, the $32 million deficit that we're currently looking at passing as a budget, that's essentially the same swing that we had from the original budget to the projected actual last year. Do you think we're going to be kind of close to that? Like I said, it's kind of an unfair question.
I wouldn't say it's unfair. It's a good question. It's something that we have to look at, of course. I don't anticipate we have the same swing that we've been seeing. And again, as I've been sharing where we are and the impact of ESER on our budget, we're seeing that swing because of ESER. And so, if we took that away, we wouldn't have that swing. Actually, we'd probably be in a small deficit based on what we're projecting to end 2022 with. So, that's why the next slide, where I share out how the impact looks without ESER, you can kind of see what that swing is. And that swing will get smaller and smaller. I will say, you know, there will be some payroll savings. We don't anticipate that we're going to hire all of the positions. We have not, historically, we have not done that. So, there's a little swing there. I will say also that we're monitoring that a lot closer than we have in the past. So, we have to be very careful in watching that deficit.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, and just as I spoke about, here's where we're looking at that. We have the indirect cost of $2.5 million and $7.6 million for expenditures that are actually being paid out of ESER. So, if you didn't include ESER, we'd have a $42 million deficit budget. So, that was, Mr. Chapa, your... So that was, Mr. Chapa, your question there kind of was answered. We'll move on to other funds. Very little change in these funds that we're bringing back to you today. Our debt service fund, we changed the revenue just a little bit, tweaked it. We're still looking at a $5.1 million surplus there. And again, we've discussed in the past about how we use that for refunding, and if we do bond deficits, we use that amount as well. Our capital projects, not much has changed there, $390 million deficit, but that's because of our expenditures are, are there for, for next year. And then our natural gas fund, nothing changed on that one from our last presentation. Our child nutrition fund now includes the 4% general pay increase, and I am glad to say that my, the budget team and Mr. Lewis were able to balance the budget. I'm very excited about that. We will be presenting a balanced budget for the food, child nutrition fund this year. And that is a look at all of those that we are proposing for the board with the 4% increase. Again, I'll share out our budget priorities, the four that we've been looking at during this process. Again, it's been a long process. We're getting to, to the very end. That's how it looks. We're still very, I'm still fairly comfortable with where we are. There are a lot of unknowns for this year. We don't know about protests and where our taxable values will actually end, but we're pretty comfortable based on historical data and how it's been, how we've been calculating. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, Ms. Moss. I just want to point out, it's a question I asked last time, and I'll bring it up just in case anyone at home's listening. We get paid based on attendance, not necessarily enrollment, and our, as you pointed out, our attendance rate is down in your projection because of COVID and some, you know, other things that districts across the country are experiencing. Our historical attendance rate is 94-ish percent. If we were to get back to 94%, if you have it on the top of your head, great. If you don't, it's fine. But if we were to get back to 94, how much would that $32 million deficit shrink?
And I think we, I think we shared out the last time. It was a guess the last time, too. I was trying to go from memory, but about $6 to $7 million per percent, we, we would increase that budget. So that could wipe out some of that deficit if we were to increase our attendance and if we were to, to get back up to the 94%. We are actually kind of, I'll, I'll say we're hoping that that does happen. We do see some increase, but based on where we are right now and planning the budget and knowing that our taxable values as well, we're being conservative to say, here's what we're looking at right now, and this is what we know right now.
Yeah, thank you. And I think, you know, again, I'll point out, it's imperative that we work with parents, educating parents and staff that we, we got to get those attendance rates up. That'd be the best way to avoid a deficit.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Thank you so much, Mrs. Moss and your team. You always present things in a way that we can all understand and break it down so that we better understand, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Welcome. Now we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. We'll now have the superintendent's report. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Fowler, and a couple of items that are going on around the district. Last weekend, Arlington ISD's Bookmobile, and you'll see some of the slides up there, began making stops throughout the city to help books, get books in the hands of our students. Arlo Bookmobile, which has a new trailer thanks to a grant from the Arlington Education Foundation, will be on the move for nine more Saturdays this summer. Grades pre-K through 1 will be able to select two books from this bookmobile, and it is operated by our library media service department, so thank you to them, and make stops at campuses, apartment complexes, and community locations. And you can find all that information on our website, aisd.net. Couple of weeks ago, we honored our star students, who are the top 2% of our graduating class. If you saw our website yesterday, you saw that four of them are moving to Ivy League colleges this fall. We have two students from Sam Houston High School and two more from Martin STEM Academy who are heading east to Ivy League. To give you a better understanding of what that means, less than 7% of the students who apply to Ivy League schools actually get accepted. So Mr. Chapa has an example of that. There's, I don't know what you should say, but that's, it's an example of, of less than 7%. And we have four students that are going, so congratulations to them. To Ivy League schools. Congratulations to the, Ms. Foster, they're going to Harvard and where else?
Woo!
Two to Harvard, one to Yale, and one to Princeton.
Two to Harvard, one to Yale, one to Princeton. Congratulations to them. I don't think that's the official yell, but it sounded, sounded good. Not sure what the official yell for Harvard is, but maybe we'll ask Mr. Chapa later. It's a whisper in the library. That's what it is, he says. Okay, so congratulations to the Divas and a Dude. And yes, that's her name. Destination Imagination Teams from Corey Academy, so you see them there on the screen. Corey Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language, the team won the state championship in the STEM competition and advanced to Global Games in Kansas City. The team finished 10th in their division at Global Games. Congratulations to the students, the parents, who are the team sponsors, and all the work. They are very persistent in their practice, and I was able to see a portion of their performance at Corey, and they're outstanding. And student-led, all the way with the parent support, so congratulations to, to that group. Last week, we were able to go to AT&T Stadium for the return of our 5th and 8th grade art show, which was sponsored by the Jean and Jerry Jones Family Arlington Youth Foundation. This event is a huge success for our district. Students get to see art displayed at the stadium, but also get to display their own art. It's a culmination of our year-long partnership with the foundation. This year, we had more than 5,000 students in our district receive guided tours in the art, this space at the stadium, and thank you to them. Total students thus far that have been impacted and have gone to art tours is over 25,000 throughout the, the partnership opportunity that we have with the, with the Jones Foundation. So thank you to them. Tuesday, we got to honor our principals, assistant principals, and deans for their hard work, as well as pick for principal, assistant principal, dean, and Rookie of the Year. So we'll get through this. Congratulations to Venture Principal Greg Meeks and Short Principal Katina Martinez for being named Principals of the Year, so you see their pictures up there. Jordan Williams from Sam Houston High School and Kalise Kelly from Atherton were our Deans of the Year. Our APs of the Year were Deborah Falls from Carter Junior High and Crystal Dean from Dunn Elementary. Our Rookie Principal of the Years were Amber Price from Ausley Junior High and Nancy Zayas from Rankin Elementary. Congratulations again to them, and thank you to the Office of School Leadership for all the fun that we had at that event. I'll spare the details, but it was a lot of fun. We had it at the athletics complex and played some games and all this other stuff, but again, spare the details. Just thank you and congratulations to our Principals and Administrators of the Year. Thank you for your hard work. They represent all our administrators across the district. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Are there any trustees with reports?
Thank you, President Fowler. This morning, I had opportunity to go to Breakfast with Champions for the Special Olympics of Texas in Hurst, and I completely enjoyed my time, had an opportunity to hear several students speak along with their mentors that mentor them throughout. A couple of things that I took note of is the Special Olympics of Texas has over 60,000 athletes that participate, and over 20,000 of those students are actually from the North Texas area, so that's very exciting. So two little nuggets that I took from the students who talked, and one was that her ability, or what people would call a disability, does not define her, but her ability to make changes and a difference in people's lives does define her. And I think we can all use that for ourselves. And then one of our elementary students from Lone Star Elementary said, when she participated in the Special Olympics, it allowed her to get outside of her comfort zone, and everybody should do that because it makes life so less boring. Completely agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays, and thank you for representing us today and attending the breakfast. Are there any other trustees with reports? If not, this meeting is adjourned at 8:51.